Good morning and welcome to the Licensing Subcommittee this morning. We'll start with some quick introductions, I'm David Barker, I'll be chairing the Subcommittee this morning. To my left and right are the members of the Subcommittee who will be making the decision today, would you like to introduce yourselves please?
Good morning, I'm Constable Abdul Qayyum, Constable Beth Park.
Good morning, I'm Constable George from Dassamund.
And we also have...
Good morning, I'm Constable Henry Nottage.
And you'll see that we also have officers with the Council working with us this morning to make sure we do things properly and to provide us with high quality advice, would you like to introduce yourselves please?
That was anticlimactic, Samantha Bond, legal advisor to the Subcommittee.
Morning, Craig Harper from the Licensing Service.
Good morning, sorry. Good morning, Emma O'Devans, Licensing Service.
And could you just confirm your names please, just for the record?
Good morning, Paul Grayson.
Morning Committee, nice to see you all again, my name's Neil Gibson, I'm here assisting Mr Grayson.
You're very welcome back Neil. And just to say, because this is a meeting in public, the cameras will be working this morning, and obviously because of the acoustics of this room, the distance you are away and the fact it has been recorded, you already seem to have got into that, if you could just press your microphone button when you're speaking, and remember to turn it off when you're not speaking, and you'll do better than most of us if you get that correct for the whole of the meeting. As you will know, there is a set procedure for such meetings, and you will notice that at point three of that procedure, it says that the solicitor to the committee will outline the procedure, so could I ask Sam to outline the procedure please?
Thank you Chair, have you got a copy of the papers that you can access? Fantastic, so Emma, the Licensing Officer this morning, will just run through the report to check that we're all happy with it and it's accurate, obviously that's why you're here today, so if there is anything that jumps out as incorrect or missing, just let us know and we'll get that amended for the record. We'll then head over to you to detail the application, provide clarification on it, and respond to the representations made, members have had the report for quite a long period of time, so they have been through everything, but it's just helpful if you can just run through that for us again for the record. There'll then be an opportunity for questions from members and officers, and we haven't got any interested parties or consultees present today, so it's good, I can skip about half of the page of the procedure because it's very, very lengthy. Once we've done with questions, you'll be given the opportunity to sum up the application just to leave us with any final thoughts if you so wish. We'll then take the options as detailed in the report from Emma, and we'll then just ask you to wait outside while members take legal advice and come to a decision, which we'll give you a little bit later on this morning. The Subcommittee's decision will also be confirmed to you in writing following on from the hearing, so by the end of the week you should have received that. Anytime during the hearing this morning, members can ask for legal advice, so that can either be an open session as we are now, or in private session where we will just pause the recording and ask you probably to nip out while we do that, but we'll feed that back once you come back into the room. And the hearing is in public this morning, and as Chair said, it is live webcast, and yeah, that's everything today actually, I've finished the page finally, thank you.
Thank you Sam, it is much more straightforward procedure than it actually sounds with all the detail, so if we could move on, could we have the report then please Emma?
Thank you Chair, this report is to consider an application to renew a school's ice cream street trading consent to trade outside of Burleigh Primary Academy. The case has been deferred from the 5th of July 2022. The applicant is Mr Paul Grayson, who submitted his renewal application for this site on the 9th of May 2022. Appendix A of this report includes the application documents with maps and pictures of the site occupied. The application was consulted with the relevant authorities, South Yorkshire Police, Fire Service, Highways and Planning, and we received no comments from them. The applicant has also consulted with the Head Teacher of the school in relation to the renewal application. This application has been referred to the Licensing Subcommittee as we have three unresolved objections to this renewal application submitted by the Head Teacher of Burleigh Primary Academy, Clive Betts MP, and Lauren Spacey of South Yorkshire Police, which all relate to issues of congestion, parking and the safety of pupils at busy times. A copy of the objections are attached at Appendix B of this report. All three objections refer to an incident which occurred on the 10th of March 2022, where a pupil walked around the van to cross the road and was hit by a car. Both the schools and South Yorkshire Police believe that the incident would not have occurred if the ice cream van was parked in a different location as it reduced visibility for anyone crossing the road. As Mr Grayson's site is a legal parking space, this could be a problem for any other large vehicle parked there. The issue has been shared with the Highways Department and Traffic Regulation Services of Sheffield City Council to seek their views on whether further consideration should be made to parking in this area to reduce any risks, we have yet to receive a response from Traffic Regulation Services. Mr Grayson has worked with our enforcement officers to find alternate trading sites near to his current location to try and resolve the objections. Officers have confirmed there is no other suitable site around the school due to the number of existing parking restrictions in the area. Appendix E of the report details the current restrictions in the area and photographs of the immediate vicinity. As the objections are unresolved, the case has been referred to the Subcommittee for Determination. Since the publication of the initial report, we have received numerous letters of support for the renewal of the application, and a further statement from one of the objectors, Clive Betts MP. These documents have been attached at Appendix D of this report. All objects and the applicant have been invited to this meeting, copies of the invites are at Appendix E of the report along with the hearing procedure. There are no financial implications arising from this report, it's recommended that members consider all relevant information available, any representations that may be made and referred to our street trading policy, in particular to paragraph 2.8 in regard to factors around public safety/highway when considering an application.
Thank you Emma, have members got any questions regarding the report at all? George?
Thank you Emma, do we know, because I don't think it's recording the report, what role at South Yorkshire Police Lauren Spacey holds?
It was asked and received no response.
Okay, that's fine, if we don't know that's absolutely fine, thank you.
I've just got one question that struck me reading that, you might, or hopefully someone, either Sam or Emma, will have an answer. We've not had a response from Highways, you say regarding the safety of that site, if they subsequently got back to us and said they were sufficiently concerned to actually put in further parking restrictions, yet we'd granted a licence for that space, what would be the position then?
I would say the Highways restrictions would sort of trump the consent that we've issued, so that would just be a matter that'd probably have to be resolved between you and Highways, but if they do put restrictions in place that would prohibit you parking then obviously you would have to abide by those, hopefully.
Thank you, do you have any questions regarding the report at all?
Thank you Chair, Emma, did you say there was a new, a further objection from Clive Betts MP, we've not received a copy of that?
A further statement.
I can rip out the report for you if you want. There's a little bit of a paragraph, he sort of said about, that he's previously put in an objection and that he couldn't be present at the last hearing, as you would do in Parliament. He's put, "I do want to emphasise again the nature of my objection, however, I do have sympathy with the ice cream seller and appreciate that licensing officers in he have tried to find an alternative place to trade and cannot. In the end, in my view, the overriding issue has to be the safety of children. I note this issue has been very clearly raised by both the Head at the school and by South Yorkshire Police and their concerns about safety. In my view, they must be paramount in giving consideration to any possibility of reissuing the licence. Whatever the problems for the street trader, they would pale into insignificance if a child were injured, and that essentially is a risk that would be taken if trading continues, given the concerns that the Head and the Police have expressed, and I hope these concerns in the end will lead the Committee to the conclusion that a new licence should not be issued."
Whoever this Lauren Spacey person is, she mentions the CCTV footage, who's viewed the footage and is it not being made available to the Committee to view? I mean, the CCTV has been made available to the Committee, from my reading of the papers, I don't think we need to see it because the circumstances of the accident are quite clear, you know, it was neither the fault of the driver of the vehicle or your client there, it's, a child was playing with his friends, run out across a road not looking, that's been clear from all the statements, both from the Police and from the people who put in letters of support, and indeed from the parent of the child in question, so I don't think it's that necessary for us to see that footage, and if I don't need to see footage of a child getting knocked down, I'd prefer not to.
I just wondered who took the CCTV, because there are no CCTV cameras on Thornbridge Avenue, so I just wondered where it had come from, but I'll let that go, it's fine. And we have, Traffic, Highways, Police, Fire and Safety haven't commented on the report, they've not put any objections in, I think you can firm that Emma, didn't you? Thank you Chair.
Well, it's actually straight back to you Neil, to detail your application and address the concerns that have been expressed.
Thank you, I mean, I'm sure the members have read the numerous emails and the petitions sent in support of Paul, and in particular, the email from Jane Spowidge, I think, who is the parent of the child involved in the accident, she does quite clearly say that it's her child Kai, it was his fault entirely, he was messing around with his friends and he wasn't paying attention and he ran out in front of the traffic, and she certainly doesn't blame any lady in the position of Paul's ice cream van, but entirely on the inattentiveness of her son. She does, as do many other people, draw attention to the parking of other parents when they come to pick the children up, but she does point out, as again, do many other people point out, what an asset Paul is to the community, do you want to say?
Yeah, I spoke to Jane, and she's quite distraught about this, she suffers from anxiety and things like that, so it's put her in a bit of a position that she thinks it's her fault that I'm being moved off, so.
Thank you, there's also, I pointed out the email from Jane Dreuden, who also blames parents for poor parking, parking double yellow lines, blocking junctions, blocking drives, driving too fast, making it generally unsafe for pedestrians. Thornbridge Avenue is a, it's a one-way street and it is a 20 mile an hour, so there are double yellow lines on one side, but not necessarily directed opposite the school entrance. The email from Ashley Colley makes comments about the parking again by other parents, she was a witness to the accident, and she confirms what Kai's mother said, that he was running around with his friends not paying attention to the road. There are other emails, Pat Horssey, Kerry Ali, Ali Hampshire, and lots of other people making similar points about how they all value Paul and what a service he is to the community and to the children. There's also, I hope you've had a copy of the petition with 160 signatures on it, supporting Paul continuing to offer the service of highly valued by local people and children. I would take issue with the statements and the objections, only in that there seems some confusion about whether the child ran out in front of the van or behind the van. Page 21, if you look at page 21, there's a picture of the ice cream van parked on the road, and it's parked in front of the double yellow, so as you come up Thornbridge Avenue following the one-way system, you can clearly see the ice cream van, you can clearly see there are people there, so as a driver, you'd only be doing a maximum of 20 anyway, because it's a 20 mile an hour zone, but I think you'd be aware that people are standing by the side of the road, you'd probably also be aware that it's a school, so you should be aware that people may move quickly, children may be running around. The original objection again, from Clive Betts, says, mentions people crossing behind the van, but the Police said that the child crossed in front of the van, which Paul would agree with, it was in front of the van. I mean, this isn't the first time the school have tried to have Paul's livelihood removed, they also objected to his presence three years ago, but unfortunately that Committee ignored it and turned down the appeal. I do think it's rather strange that there's no crossing patrol outside the school, I know the schools are supposed to organise that, they may not be able to get anybody to run a crossing patrol, there's no zebra crossing in place, opposite the school is the main housing estate and a number of the pupils live there, so they do have to cross Thornbridge Avenue to get home, and I thought it was rather odd that Highways don't think that maybe a crossing would be an answer to this, would be a help. So hopefully I think you would agree that Paul can't be held responsible for the poor driving, but people who park badly, parking corners, park in double yellow lines, or drivers who speed over the speed limit, thank you Chair.
Are you happy for me to open this up to questions then now? George, do you want to start?
Chair, I've just got, I don't know if it's really point of admission or thing, Neil, you referred to a petition, I'm not, I'm sorry if I've missed it, I'm not sure I've seen anything attached to the report around a petition, is that?
I sent the petition through to Licensing.
Apologies if I've missed it in my papers, can we just clarify whether that is something as part of the...
I've got a copy here if you want to see it.
I mean, I don't disbelieve it, I just wondered whether that's been something that's submitted in advance, really? No, okay, well, I mean, if you want to pass that, is that okay? Is that orderly, passed to the members?
Yeah, of course it is.
Yeah, okay, thank you, I can get it Neil, don't worry, unless the officer wants to...
Abdul, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Just a brief, Chair, can I just ask how long previously Paul has been trading there as an ice cream van?
I've been there probably six, seven years now, there are another ice cream van, she's been here probably 30 years, so that school's been covered nearly 40 year, that school.
Thank you Paul, and during that period, have you previously had any such incidents or complaints against your...
Not one, no.
Thank you Chair.
Can I, obviously parking outside schools is an issue, well nationally, not just locally, and it does cause significant problems, and I accept that you're not responsible for bad parking by other people, but do you think that by parking there, because of the nature of other people's behaviour, that you add to the problem and perhaps do cause a safety issue?
Yeah, if I'm not parked there, you could get a works vehicle there, another van, so I don't think it's a big issue that I'm there, because when the people come over to my van and get served, they walk on the same side of the road, they don't walk back across the road, they walk either down or up to where they live.
The school is on one side of the road, Paul is parked on the opposite side of the road, and then on that side of the road is the estate, so people will either walk into the estate if they live there, or they walk back down Thornbridge Avenue to the main road to catch a bus or travel somewhere else.
So having crossed the road, they don't need to recross, they don't come across, get an ice cream and go back, and that if you didn't park there, someone else would be parked there, potentially causing a similar issue. I know people have been out instantly, but as someone who knows the area far better than I, you've been there, could you think of an alternative spot that might potentially be safer or might cause less hazard?
I went out a couple of times to look at it with that idea in mind, I mean, I've seen cases like this before, 10 years on the Committee, I've seen most things pass in front of us in this Committee, as have you David, and I, there is nowhere, it's a very old little street, one, just behind where Paul parks the van is the little cul-de-sac, and if you go further on, there's a road that lets you into the main estate, and if you go further on, and it's another cul-de-sac, so you only go up that road if you're going to the school or if you live on the estate, and there is no other safe place with such good sightlines, as you can see from page 21, it's a very clear sightline, as you drive off the main road onto Thornbridge Avenue, you drop from 30 down to 20, there's nothing else parked on the left-hand side because there are double yellows to keep the start of the street clear, and then Paul's van is parked at the first, at the end of the first double yellow markings below the school entrance, and then there's free parking after that up to the school entrance.
And just from me as well, we've obviously seen the objection from the Head Teacher of the school, it seems that you've had conversations with the Head Teacher, I just wonder if there was anything arising from those conversations that might be helpful for the Committee?
It seems the Head Teacher doesn't want Paul's van there, but it seems that the parents and the residents of the estate do, so I get the feeling that maybe there's some sort of headbutting between the parents and the Head Teacher, for whatever reason, she has a reason for objecting, and her objection the last time, I think three years ago, was just, she just didn't want ice cream being sold outside the school, but she had no good reason, and I just, this accident has happened, no one's blaming Paul, they're all blaming the child, the Police seem to be saying, well, Highways should do something, it's not a safe street, I just feel that Paul's in the middle of all this, it's sort of like the innocent party, it could have been a builder's van the child ran out in front of, and you know, you wouldn't be holding, the builder wouldn't be here, because he didn't need a licence to park his van on the street, so we could, we could talk to the Headmistress and see if we could find some compromise with her, as one of the parents suggested, why don't you park inside the school grounds, then it won't be a problem, so, yeah. I think it's a very hot local issue, the number of emails and the signatures on the petition, the number of comments on Facebook, which I also sent through to Licensing, I wouldn't put any weight by it, but there's a lot of anger in the community that Paul's in this situation.
Thank you, Sam, do you have any questions for the applicant to this stage?
I was just going to ask about conversations with the Head Teacher going forward, but yeah, I think it's all been covered for me, thank you.
Just a very quick question, just, I mean, I referred to it in the question in the report around the evidence of the Police Officer, just to check, Paul or Neil on your behalf, do you have any idea to what that Police Officer might refer into when, because if you look at the comparison between the objection from the Police Officer and from the Head Teacher and Clive Betts MP, both the Head Teacher and Clive Betts MP say there may be a better space for this, the Police Officer says would be, that would be more suitable further down the road, do you have any idea whether there is an actual space which they may be referring to, or have you had any conversations of that, of that nature, or do you believe that it is, yeah, just purported idea of it would be better down the road? It's just the difference between the would in the Police Officer's statement and the may, which obviously brings uncertainty, the other two, are prior to objections, thanks.
I would question the use of the word Police Officer, George, I'm not sure who this person is.
Police representative, that's absolutely right, sorry.
She's put an objection in, but the Police haven't, themselves haven't objected, which I didn't know what was going on there, why they didn't, anyway, we'll let that go. I think Licensing have been out, Licensing's spoken to you Paul, they've not been able to identify anywhere safe, I've been out twice to just double check, and I can't see anywhere which is as safe as the position he currently parks in, which I think must have been decided 40 odd years ago by the first ice cream van, man, maybe there were less cars on the road at that time, it wasn't as busy as it is now, maybe parents walked the children to school then and didn't park in badly and cause congestion.
Sorry, if I can just come back with a quick, just for clarity, Chair, thank you, firstly, can I just ask Sam, the objection from the Police Officer, normally if the Police are invited to put forward any objections, they would come from the Police Service who have the representatives, I think it's been clear in this case, whether the objection is from the Police Officer in her individual capacity or from the organisation itself, can we ask some clarity on that? And so I'll answer that first and then ask another question from Paul.
Yeah, I think we're all pretty much agreed, we can't ascertain what her role is, it doesn't appear to me that the objection or the comments have come from the Police in their general capacity in objecting to the application, it does seem to be this officer appeared to be involved in the incident and there are her comments, so whatever weight you attach to that when making the decision would be a matter for you to settle, bearing that in mind.
Thank you Sam, and Neil, again, I think you've partly already said this, but just for clarity again for myself, just to, you know, be quite clear, so the van is parked, so the ice cream van is parked opposite this school, and you said the state where majority of the children are on that side of the road as well, so whether the van is parked there or not, is it actually that the majority of the children would have to cross the road to get to their houses, to go home? So once they've crossed, whether the van is there or not, whether they're buying ice cream or not, they wouldn't have much of a reason to cross back the road again, so those children who are going to buy an ice cream, they would cross the road first, then buy an ice cream if they want to, and they would then probably more likely than not to just go home on that side, stay on that side of the road, is that correct?
If you look at page 21, it's a very clear picture, so where the railings are on the right-hand side, that's one entrance to the school, there's another entrance slightly further up, but there's a sort of crossing, there are markers on either side of the road as an indication, you know, the striped beacons are like a warning that children or people may be crossing, but it's not a proper crossing, but that's one place children may cross, but yes, there are no houses on the right-hand side, because the whole of the right-hand side of Thornbridge is the school, the left-hand side, as you can see just behind Paul's van, you can see the roof of a house, that's the estate on the left-hand side, and in the far distance is the end of Thornbridge Avenue, another cul-de-sac, and that's another house in the estate, but there's a number of houses in the estate on the left, so where the children are standing beside the van, that's then an open green play area space, and then behind that are more houses, and that's the entrance into the estate, so my assumption is, and Paul says it's true, that the kids will cross by the van, and it's a one-way street, so there's nothing coming the other way, they're all coming in the direction of the picture taken, the traffic is moving in that way, then when they cross, then they don't have to cross back because it's only the school on the other side.
Thanks Neil, that's pretty clear, thank you.
Emma, is there anything you would wish to ask the applicants?
I've got no questions, thank you Chair.
Then after no further questions, if you expect yourselves to sum up?
Thank you Chair, I'll be brief, because I know what it's like on your side, when people talk too much from this side. All I'd say is, I think the amount of support in the community clearly shows that the community values Paul as an asset, and a lot of the people writing it have said, are they you went to the school and the children and they really enjoyed the treat of an ice cream after school? I mean, setting aside the question of, you know, having an ice cream van outside the school, he is there, there's been an ice cream van there for 40 years with no incident, this is the first time that we can find that any incident has happened, Highways, the Police themselves, Fire and Safety have not put any comments or objections to the report, Licensing Officers have been out to try and see if there's somewhere else Paul could park, I think everyone's agreed that's the safest place for him to park at the moment, so I hope the Committee would take the view that this is just a one-off, it really is not Paul's fault that there's no crossing, nor that other parents park badly and block the road and block the views, and I think the strength of the local community feeling is that they'd like to see Paul remain there as they value him as a community asset, so I hope the Committee would take the same view, thank you very much.
Thank you, could we have the options please Emma?
Thank you Chair, the options open to the Committee are to grant the renewal for a school's ice cream street trading consent, to grant the renewal application with amendments, to defer the matter for further consideration, to refuse the renewal application.
Thank you, could I ask you to now leave with the Licensing Officer while we take legal advice and come to a decision, and as soon as we've made that, we'll invite you back in, if there's anything you want to leave in the room, feel free to leave it in the room. Well, thank you for your time and your representations this morning, it's been really helpful to the committee. The decision of the committee, having considered this and taken advice, is to grant the licence as applied for. However, we do recognise that there are issues in that area with parking and behaviour of motorists, particularly around school collection and dropping off times. So we'll be recommending that Highways do review and come back with any recommendations they have to improve safety. But we recognise those safety issues aren't the sole responsibility of the ice cream van there and that similar issues would occur with any vehicles parked in that space. And we hope your rest of your summer is successful and that you manage to get out and sell some ice creams before we get hit by thunderstorms. So that's the decision of the subcommittee this morning.
Thank you very much Chair. Thank you. I'd just say to the committee, I'm really sorry, I've just heard about Clive, Craig just told me. So, you know, I worked with him for all the 10 years I was here and he's a wonderful supporter and a great officer. And he's a terrible loss to the service and to the whole community and the council. So my condolences to the committee and all the officers.
Thank you, that's much appreciated. The funeral's on 2.30 on Friday at Clifford and we're encouraged to wear Sheffield United shirts if we wish.
You know me, what is that? What's a Sheffield United shirt?
So the cases that are on next are closed to the public, so we will end the recording now. That's the decision in relation to the street trading consent, so we will end the live webcast now. Thank you.
Thank you.